I'd like to open up a presentation portion of our meeting. And I was, we'll start with Commissioner Mead. He has a presentat- scholarship presentation to make.
Yeah, is Mr. Whalen here? Now, this could be receiving this. Yeah, Will Whalen? I guess he didn't quite, maybe he didn't know what time he was supposed to be here. Well, you know what? The time is here, and we're gonna award this to him, and in one way or the other, we'll make sure he gets this envelope, because I think it's important to him. The Anderson County Board of Commissioners established and began contributing personal funds to a scholarship fund in 1996. This fund was set up to provide scholarships annually to a student at each of three high schools in Anderson County. I would like to thank the Guidance Department at Oak Ridge High School for their efforts in soliciting applicants and selecting their scholarship recipient for 2019. On behalf of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, I would like to present this $500 scholarship certificate to William Will Whalen. Let me close by congratulating you, Will, wherever you are, on your achievements that are being recognized here tonight, and I hope everyone encourages you to continue your education with the same enthusiasm you have demonstrated to this point. They have the following thing. This is a scholarship, and the certificate says as follows. Be it resolved this 20th day of May 2019, the Anderson County Board of County Commissioners hereby awards the 23rd Annual County Commissioner Scholarship in the amount of $500 to William Will Whalen. And signed by Tracy Wondell, Chairman. Thank you.
In our next presentation, Mayor Frank will introduce the next presenter.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. With us tonight is Lindsay Cody and Jill Murphy. Lindsay is the East Tennessee Regional Administrator for the Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth. He represents the East Tennessee Council on Children and Youth, and they represent Knox as well as 16 surrounding counties. They have 1,300 members. The Commission on Children and Youth is the State Child Advocacy Commission under the Governor's Boards and Commissions. And I always have to work really hard at that word, advocacy. See? I jinxed myself. Advocacy Commission. Jill Murphy is the System of Care Across Tennessee Regional Coordinator for the Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth. And a couple, or maybe it was three months ago, they were with us and gave a presentation that was so incredibly valuable for the courts, and we discussed sharing it with you as the, our legislative body. And so they're here with a, they've tried to abbreviate it, they wanted 30 minutes. Lindsay has cut it down to 15, so this is gonna be a speed run, but it's very valuable, and I'd like to welcome them.
Thank you, Commission members. It's an honor to be here. Mayor Frank, it's an honor to be asked by you to come back. We are here to talk to you about adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. Now, I know you've heard of ACEs, and you're thinking, well, ACEs, when I think of ACEs, that's something, that's a card game, or something like that. It actually means adverse childhood experiences. Oprah has mentioned it recently on television, and the ACEs that she went through when she was growing up as a child. But ACEs are stressful or traumatic experiences that disrupt the safe nurturing environment that children need in order to thrive. Exposure to ACEs can lead individuals towards healthy habits, unhealthy habits, and cause negative long-term health and economic issues. The more a person is exposed to ACEs, the more his or her risk increases for potential issues. In the red folders that I gave you, I want you to look, and look on the right side, there is the original ACEs quiz that was given to 17,000 people by Kaiser Permanente. And it's a self-test, but just look at that for about a minute. Some of the questions are very, very personal. Do you have a copy, sir?
I did, but I lost it.
Oh, okay. Let me, here you go. And for you, those of you in the audience who are participating today, I passed out a couple of folders, and if you'd like to look at that original ACEs quiz, if somebody would just share that, that'd be great. Stephanie's got one, I think. So you notice those are really, really very personal questions. And you may, sometime, take that, take a self-test of that ACEs test. Don't tell anybody your score, but just see if you have any ACEs in your life. You may have had no ACEs in your life. Research shows, though, that providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships in early life can buffer the damaging effects of adverse childhood experiences. Now, the state of Tennessee's response to ACEs is called Building Strong Brains. The Tennessee Commission on Children and Youth, we developed this training through an initiative with the Governor, and that was Governor Haslam at the time, and the legislature to help educate and prevent ACEs in Tennessee. The East Tennessee Council on Children and Youth, we've been conducting a 16-county tour with the county mayors. I think, I wanna say, we're honored that Mayor Frank asked us that, because we've already done a presentation to the mayor and the judge, the general judge here, and to the important stakeholders in the community to address the, to educate the county about ACEs, okay? We wanted to let you know that our goal is to make sure that Anderson County is trauma-informed, because ACEs involves trauma and toxic stress. If we can prevent ACEs in Anderson County, it will pay back through a lifetime of productivity and responsible citizenship. I also believe that we can create prosperity and more opportunities for Anderson County citizens, rather than having to provide remedial services which affect the community, which includes raising taxes and providing extra services, you know, that people don't want to have to pay taxes for. Okay. This is a very abbreviated version of Building Strong Brains, which shows how adverse childhood experiences harm the developing brain, which can result in a lifetime of health problems and even early death. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna turn this over to Jill Murphy, our wonderful System of Care Coordinator of the Commission on Children and Youth, and let her do this presentation for you. And this is just a 15-minute presentation about ACEs. The real presentation is actually three hours long, but I'm gonna turn this over to Jill right now.
Thank y'all very much for letting us come tonight. We are gonna do the abbreviated version of this, and so it may have been a really great night that we came, based on the 5:00 discussion that y'all had about raising taxes in schools and all that budget fund stuff that y'all were talking about. So let's get started, and... This is not gonna work. Okay. Brian's gonna have to help me out here. I don't know if I'm, if I'm working or not. So, as Lindsay said, Governor Haslam has put, put some, a lot of money into the Building Strong Brains. And right before he left office, he felt so strongly, he put $2.5 million in reoccurring budget. Now, y'all are the legislative body here in Anderson County, you know how hard something like that is to do, but he felt that strongly about it. So this is trying to bring everybody onto the same page, and the, really, the whole goal is to change not just programs on a program level, but policy and how the whole culture of Tennessee sees trauma. All right, Brian, sorry. One more. Okay. And this is really the main slide I wanted to talk to y'all about, since your, your goal is the strong communities and healthy economy in Anderson County, right? Go like this, this is what you're elected for. Thank you. And in able to do that, it all has to start with that healthy child development. So I'm gonna skip kinda some of the next slides about specific healthy child development, because there is a video that sums it up a lot better and a lot faster than I do. But when you have that healthy child development, you have those educational achievements that Dr. Parrot was talking about. You want our kids to stay in school and do a great job. You want economic productivity. I live in Rome County, and Anderson County is very, we're very envious of all that you have here and all the, the industry. And I know we have a hard time finding good workers for our industry because of the substance abuse problem that, that the whole state and country is facing right now. And again, it goes back to that healthy child development. We want responsible citizenships and lifelong health, and I'm gonna get into that in just a little bit. But the more you can do that, all right? Brian, go ahead and skip to the video, if you would, please. Okay. This sums it up really well.
Science tells us that the experiences we have in the first years of our lives actually affect the physical architecture of the developing brain. This means that brains aren't...
I didn't do it.
No. Yep. Just set that to proper.
I'm setting it down. I'm gonna turn it off even.
Science tells us that the experiences we have in the first years of our lives actually affect the physical architecture of the developing brain. This means that brains aren't just born, they're also built over time, based on our experiences. Just as a house needs a sturdy foundation to support the walls and roof, a brain needs a good base to support our future development. Positive interactions between young children and their caregivers literally build the architecture of the developing brain. Building a sturdy foundation in the earliest years provides a good base for a lifetime with good mental function and better overall health. So just how is a solid brain foundation built and maintained in a developing child? One way is through what brain experts call serve and return interactions. Imagine a tennis match between a caregiver and a child, but instead of hitting a ball back and forth across the net, various forms of communication pass between the two, from eye contact to touch, from singing to simple games like peekaboo. These interactions repeated throughout a young person's developing years are the bricks that build a healthy foundation for our future development. But another kind of childhood experience shapes brain development too, and that's stress. Good kinds of stress, like meeting new people or studying for tests, are healthy for development, because they prepare kids to cope with future challenges. Another kind of stress, called toxic stress, is bad for brain development. If a child is exposed to serious ongoing hardships, like abuse and neglect, and he has no other caregiver in his life to provide support, the basic structures of his developing brain may be damaged. Without a sturdy foundation to properly support future development, he's at risk for a lifetime of health problems, development issues, even addiction. It's possible to fix some of the damage of toxic stress later on, but it's easier, more effective, and less expensive to build solid brain architecture in the first place. One of the things that sturdy brain architecture supports is the development of basic emotional and social skills. An important group of skills which scientists call executive function and self-regulation can be thought of like air traffic control in the child's mental airspace. Think of the young child's brain as the control tower at a busy airport. All those planes landing and taking off, and all of the support systems on the ground simultaneously demand the controller's attention to avoid a crash. It's the same with a young child, learning to pay attention, plan ahead and remember, and follow lots of rules. Like all of us, kids have to react to things happening in the world around them, while also dealing with worries, temptations, and obligations on their minds. As these demands for attention pile up, air traffic control helps the child regulate the flow of information, prioritize tasks, and above all, find ways to manage stress and avoid mental collisions along the way. Having this ability is a necessity for positive blood circulation. Developing effective air traffic control, overcoming toxic stress, and building solid brain architecture are things kids can't do alone. And since strong societies are made up of healthy contributing individuals, it's up to us as a community to make sure all young people have the kinds of nurturing experiences they need for positive development. To build better futures, we need to build better brains.
And one thing the video didn't mention is that serve and return, for a child under three, they are developing a million neuroconnections a minute. That's why babies sleep so much. They've got so much information coming, they're building those neuro, neuron connections, and that's really where that foundation comes from. So when we have kids with that toxic stress, you know, the parental addiction or something like that, that's always gonna elevate their heart rate, you know, flood the system with endorphins every night, they don't know what's gonna happen, that can mess up the brain and the wiring. So sometimes we see these kids that come into school, and you're like, why can't you just sit down and listen and do what you're supposed to? And they're literally wired differently. And we'll get to a little bit more at the end about how, things that you can do about that. And I know you're thinking, hey, this is on ACEs, you're telling me how to build a strong brain, you haven't said anything about ACEs. And I'm glad you brought that up, because now we are. So what are ACEs, adverse childhood experiences? Kaiser Permanente is a, is a insurance company out of California. We'll let him slide, because it is California. And they did this survey with 17,000 people, and it was 75% white, 75% most college-educated, and they were all employed, and they all had health insurance. Now, when I, where I live in Rome County, that's not a good cross-section of Rome County. Is it a good cross-section of Anderson County? Shake your head like this, thank you. No, it's really not, and it's not a good cross-section of the country. And I say that because I want you to understand that these results were really surprising, because these are people you wouldn't think would have much childhood adversity. But if you can see, and I think you've got that in your folder too, the only one out of all these, in the abuse, they looked at three different categories. Abuse, physical, emotional, and sexual; neglect, physical and emotional; and under household dysfunction, they had mental illness. And that is somebody in the household with mental illness, not just the child, or just the person. The mother treated violently; divorce; incarcerated relative; and substance abuse in the house. And the only one that was less than 10% was an incarcerated relative. So when you're looking at the people that they studied, it seems like you would think it would be less for this, this group, and more for the general population. So that was really kinda surprising. And again, we talked a little bit about toxic stress in the video, and we, and you know how, like if a bear were to walk in the room, somebody just snuck in here, who just snuck in here? Somebody snuck in here. And if it wasn't him, if it was a bear that walked in, what would happen to us? Our heart rate would go up, our adrenaline would be flooding, all those things. So if you can imagine that happening from infancy on, and you picture these kids that live with their bear, you know, if they don't know what kinda mood mom's gonna be in, or if mom's gonna be high, or mom's even gonna be there when they get home from school, that's the kind of life they live in. I know Dr. Parrot probably hears, and there was a teacher in her earlier, she may have left. You know, they might have kids that are sleeping in school, because that's the only place they're safe, because you don't know what's going on at, at home at night. When they first said, hey, you're gonna be an ACEs trainer, and you're gonna talk about how adverse childhood experiences might cause cancer, I'm like, whoa, wait, what? But if you think about all those bodily reactions from a young standpoint, a young child on, and all the damage that can be caused to all those, those organs, you can look at, see, and you can understand how ACEs could have a lasting effect, effect on the health. So obesity, diabetes, depression, suicide attempts, STDs, heart disease, cancer, strokes, broken bones, COPD. And a lot of it has to do with not just the damage that's been done by that toxic stress, but the behaviors that have been adapted because of it. So the smoking, or the drinking, or the drug use, also, it has a lot to play into that. Does that all make sense? And if, if you have six or more ACEs, you have a 20-year less life expectancy than someone with no ACEs. 20 years, that is huge. And a lot of that, again, is because of those maladaptive and unhealthy behavior, risky behaviors. Okay. That, that is national data. We're gonna talk about Tennessee data. And I can be a little snarky at times, I'm sure you've probably already picked that up. So I'm gonna tell you how they got this Tennessee data. So what they did is, they meant, they called people. Does anybody in here answer their phone with a number they don't recognize? You're laughing, do you? There's always one. There's always one guy in the crowd.
Public infecible, you have?
That's true. Okay, I'll let you slide with that one. So, most of us don't answer the phone with this number we don't recognize. And then, say, Commissioner Mead answers his phone, right? And he says, this is Commissioner Mead, how can I help you? And somebody says, Commissioner Mead, I wanted to, I want you to take a survey. So if Commissioner Mead doesn't hang up the phone right then and there, and he actually says yes, which you've already lost me there, because I'm not gonna answer the phone, and if I do, if I'm in a weird mood that night and I answer the phone, and they ask me a survey, I'm definitely gonna guess I didn't know. So then, they have asked you just 10 really personal questions. You read those, right? You read all those questions. So Commissioner Mead, what are the chances he's gonna be honest with those really personal questions? Yes, no, maybe?
It's not likely that very many people would be honest.
Right, right. And before I had this job, I worked for the Anti-Drug Coalition in Rome County, but before then, I was a therapist at Peninsula Hospital. Do we all know what Peninsula Hospital is? Go like this, mental health hospital. They never called my patients there. And I'm pretty sure they haven't called anybody in the jail. So I'm saying all that to let you know that these numbers, although surprising, might be a little under-reported, okay? Brian, if you wanna go ahead and hit that for me. So at least 61 of the Commissioner Mead-type people that answered the phone and answered the survey had at least one ACE. Okay, one more. And at least 27% had three or more ACEs. So when we look at those numbers, we're gonna think that those are really probably lower-reported, okay? Does that make sense to everybody? Go like this. I like the participation, thank you. Okay. We are not gonna show this video, because it is always, never works for me, but I want you to know that I'm not here, I'm not just your Debbie Downer. You know, thanks Jill for depressing us, now you can go. I want you to know that these are facts, not fate, okay? Because you have five ACEs doesn't mean you have a 20%, it means it could happen. So we want to be able to, as a county, this is why we're here tonight, is to teach you that you can help foster resilience. I'm not telling you to vote for the tax increase that Dr. Parrot wants, you know, and to fund the schools. That's a great place to start, but there are a lot of other things that we can all do as, as humans.
You've done...
He's like, no, don't say that, don't say that. But there's a lot of different things that we can do to foster resilience. Y'all have a great Boys and Girls Club here, I know that. I don't know if they asked for funding, but maybe if they did, keep that in the back of your mind, that, hey, these, these kids are getting a good, safe, stable nurturing environment in the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you. You've got, y'all have got some amazing resources here, and so even when a, when a, somebody comes to you with a new part, you know, new idea for a park, or something like that, this information, with you being trauma-informed, how can this help families of Anderson County? This is what I want you to have in the back of your mind when these things come across your desk, which is why I'm here tonight. Does that make sense? If I go like this? Good, thanks. Okay. So, but a safe, stable nurturing environment is what we're after. I like to save my money, and Dr. Parrot does a great job, and I know he's got teenagers that he sends to other fabulous, you know, Ridgeview is a great mental health facility here. But we spend so much more money on those teenage years when the brain is not as palatable, malleable, is that the right word? I have two teenagers, I can attest to this, that their brains are not changing very much, okay? But when it's before the age of three, you have that better opportunity to come in and support the families. Okay. What can be done about ACEs? I'm very glad you asked. So these are just some ideas, and y'all are welcome to come up with more ideas. Home visiting to pregnant women and families with newborns. I know some counties do a baby box, you know, to send home with every mother that has a baby in that county, and they do provide ACE information, and that serve and return. My son hates to go to the grocery store with me anymore, because he's like, Mom, you just can't not serve and return with every baby you see. And I'm like, yeah, true. Parent support programs for teens, teen pregnancy. I know the Health Department does a really good job on, on some teen pregnancy prevention. Parenting training, mental illness and substance abuse treatment. This will be my soapbox. If you wanna hear more about this, you've got my phone number, call me, I will, I will talk to you all day about the fact that we don't have enough mental illness and substance abuse treatment options in this state, anywhere. You do, however, have a fabulous prevention organization here with Stephanie, with ASAP, I do know that, and that's awesome. Intimate partner violence prevention, preschool enrichment. And then sometimes you're thinking, it's not, it's, you wouldn't be helping fund babysitting, you're enriching and building those babies' brains. Social support for parents, and sufficient income support for lower-income families. And I don't know what that would look like, sometimes, but I do know that if I'm a single mom, working my jobs, and my, and I, and I'm worried about paying my rent and putting food on the table, and my stress level is so high because of those things, I'm more likely to be abusive to my children. So I'm not saying hand 'em cash, but the more we, resources for food, or transportation to get to that job, whatever kind of things that, again, thinking outside the box, like we talked about at 5:00, are always good things to think about. This is just a really colorful fancy slide to say everything I've been saying. We want everybody from, from county commissions, from, from the Governor on to, to simple citizens like me, to look at and be trauma-informed, and do everything that we can to, to help our kids and our families in Anderson County. And we do wanna, go back one more, please. And so the, the goal is to change that conversation from what's wrong with you. And y'all, I'm the judgiest person ever when I go to the Walmart and Hareman. Okay, yeah? Am I timed? Are you pointing at me?
No, I was thanking him for closing the door.
Oh, okay, okay. And, you know, when I go to Walmart, sometimes I'm like, oh my gosh! And I know I'm not the only one, so you don't have to raise your hand. But now, it's more like, what, what is going on that, that this is how you present yourself at Walmart? Does that make sense? Or, or why are you sleeping in class? My daughter, who's pretty snarky too, I don't know where she comes up with that, but she came home her senior year of high school and said, Mom, so-and-so slept through class today. I wonder what happened last night. And to know that there could have been, you know, the police there for domestic violence, or to know, you know, I told her about this one girl who sleeps in the closet because her parents are using, and so after everybody's done using, and some people are passed out, she's molested, so she spends most nights in the closet. So she sleeps in school because she's comfortable and safe there. So to have that conversation switch with my daughter was huge. And, and again, think of all the things around us. What can we do to be more trauma-informed? I know Anderson County schools are very well-trauma-informed. There was one school system that we talked to, that a child was taken to juvenile court in handcuffs because he needed an extra corn dog and took it. And he ended up in handcuffs at the courthouse because of a corn dog. They call it the Corn Dog Incident, right? So, because they were not trauma-informed. I know Anderson County really is, and that's fabulous. But the more we get, you know, there was a hospital up in northeast Tennessee that looked at their signage. How are we not re-traumatizing people? Because they had this huge sign that says STD treatments this way, you know, so everybody knew where you were going and what you were doing there, you know? So looking at your signage, looking at your, you know, how are you welcoming people, that kinda thing. So, questions, comments, snide remarks? That is my, like, really quick version.
You're doing good.
Thank you. Phew, okay.
Anderson County has a head start on ACEs. Law enforcement is being trained, trauma-informed here. Mayor's office, of course, the juvenile court is very supportive of us. There are several, I was gonna say, the SROs, or two. So, so when I first learned about ACEs, what it does is, it helps me to be a better person. It's like walking in a Walmart and seeing somebody who's very unkept, and I think to myself, don't judge that person, say they're trash, or whatever it is. What has happened to that person in their lives? They may have grown up poor, they may, they may have had abusive parents, you know? Why, or why are they smoking a cigarette? There's, there are people, my mother's in assisted living, and my mother says, the nurses that take her to the restroom, she, she, she gets on to them, because they have to go out for their smoke break. And I said, Mom, they're paying them $9 an hour to take care of you. A lot of these women don't have any education, they're very poor. And I said, they started smoking, because they probably had a lot of stress in their life. So try to be more understanding of people. So if you understand ACEs, it kinda helps you to be a better person, too, as well, so...
Absolutely. And you have our information for our website, so if you want more information, you're welcome to go on there, there's data, there's everything. And if you have questions, comments, or, like I said, snide remarks, I'm open to those, just keep 'em kind.
And also, look in, look in your packets. What we did is, since ACEs affect the economy, there's some data in there on Anderson County. You're gonna see exactly where your county ranks in the Kids Count study. So it'll show, it's got family and education, it's got a couple other things, it's inside the packet, but it's specific to this county. And then there's the new national book that came out today. You guys are the first group to get it here in East Tennessee. So it shows you where Tennessee ranks, and that just came out today. So, we're done, we thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you, guys.
We are so honored that, that Mayor Frank cares about ACEs, and makes, making sure Anderson County is trauma-informed.
Thank you so much. Great.
Can I say one thing? I've got a group of teachers and administrators right now, like four days of training on trauma-informed schools. So we're right in line. And what she said is true. Listen, it's not about discipline keepers, it's about trying to figure out, as she says, someone go home with a bear every night, so we'll try to...
Well, Dr. Parrot, and thank you for saying that. Let me just say one other thing to you, okay? There's a movie, and if you have Amazon Prime, it, it's called Paper Tigers. And they took the ACEs information that we told you guys about today in 15 minutes, and they applied it to this alternative school in Walla Walla, Washington, and they, they turned, it turned that school around. 75%, no more resuscitation, as they said. It, it's incredible. It's directed by James Redford, Robert Redford's on, but if you get a chance to see that movie, it's called Paper Tigers. Anyway, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. Thank you very much. There's no other remarks. There's no other remarks.
Can we do a, a really quick photo with the, the commission? Is that so, Chris?
Real quickly, Mr. Chairman, is William?
Yes.
Did you show? I didn't know how you want to dress up. Mr. William came in for the scholarship.
Oh, it's... Well, I'll turn the meeting back over to Mr. Mead then.
I'll tell you what, Commissioner Mead, why don't we, at the beginning of our...
I mean, we already made a presentation on TV. I can, I can just talk to him and give him the...
Okay. All right. And then if you want to go ahead and do the pictures, it's up to you.
He's asking the commission to have a photo opportunity. Fritz usually, Commissioner Fritz usually gets us all down.
The scholarship is a person too, if you'd like. That way you kill two birds with one stone. If you'd like.
Come on up and get the picture.
Come on down, everybody.
Where do you want to, Commissioner? Where would we go?
You guys go there.
Guys, grab your Kids Count books and just pull up your Kids Count books if you don't care. Thank you for indulging us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I'm usually a lot funnier because I have more time.
Come on here, come on here.
The commission members, they just can't stay away from paparazzi.
Thank you.
No pictures, no pictures.
William, come on up. Let's get a picture with you. Oakridge, you want to get down there? Mead's going down there.
Come right down here. Right down here.
Catherine. Catherine. We're doing a Catherine.
You want, you want, you want to be up front with this picture here? Just take this. All that like that.
Thank you, Steve.
Big smile.
Sorry, Mr. William. Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. One more time. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And if you have any questions, my, my home phone number, my cell phone number, and my email.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our presentation portion of the meeting.
Yeah, they're going to be out. Yep. Everybody ready? Okay, we're going to call the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, regular agenda Monday, June 17, 2019, to order. Please boot up and check in. I don't think I've done it myself yet. I can figure out which button to push.
You got me.
Swipe to unlock. Swipe up. Turn it back on.
Oh, there you go.
Swipe up. There you go. Hit the roll call. Log in. Okay. Commissioner Meredith will not be here tonight, and Commissioner Fritz will not be here tonight. Just, okay. All right, we'll get started with prayer. I'll lead us in the prayer, and pledge will be led by Commissioner Waddell. If you all rise, please.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this blessed day you've bestowed on us once again. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and grace as we move forward through the county's business. We thank you for those who are looking out for our youth and our children as they are going to become the future leaders of this county, this great state, and this great nation. All these things, we ask in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Commissioner Waddell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Before we go to the parents and citizens, we have a couple of special guests. Well, actually, one, we have several TVA members here. Several of us went to a meeting this afternoon to Bull Run Steam Plant, had a great tour of the facility and great discussions. But at this time, if it's all right with the board, I'd like to have the TVA President, CEO, Mr. Jeff Lyash, to come on up, and he'd like to just say a few words, introduce himself, and then we'll get into our business. Mr. Lyash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I must comment, I rode up in the elevator with William. He was very proud and very nervous on the way up here. So I'm sure you're taking a few minutes to take that picture. It meant a lot to him.
William will get his resume prepared and have it turned in in the morning.
I've already asked him for it. Always on the lookout for good talent. Thank, thank you for taking, for allowing me to take just a few minutes to introduce myself and say just a couple of words about TVA. And thank you all for your service as well. I know these, these jobs are difficult, a lot of, a lot of serious matters for you to consider, and I don't think the corporations or citizens can say thank you often enough. It's something I think that TVA shares with the commission, and that service at the heart of what we, what we do. Chairman, as you mentioned, we had a, I thought, a good session today at Bull Run. We had a number of the commissioners, other elected officials, as well as some industrial leaders and community leaders out at Bull Run for a lunch and learn about the current status of that facility, its future, and more specifically about our plans for holding, for managing combustion coal residuals, among them, prime among them, coal ash. I appreciate just a few minutes to introduce myself as the new CEO of TVA. I, I've been 37 years in the power business around the US, much of it next door in North Carolina. I think it's an important business to people's lives, and, and the service nature of it, I think, is, is what made, has made my career really enjoyable, and I'm very proud to join TVA. I've been in the job 10 weeks, and I've traveled 10,000 miles across the seven states that we serve, meeting and getting to know people like yourselves, because it's important that TVA hear the voices of the communities we serve, engage you in what we do in terms of making decisions and laying out plans, and that, and that we have a very healthy dialogue. With respect to Bull Run, that plant has served the citizens of the Tennessee Valley for nearly 60 years, as have these coal plants across the country. The economy, people's quality alive, development in regions like the Valley here and elsewhere, were done largely on the back of these coal plants as we moved from constructing hydro to constructing coal. And they've been managed all the way along to the best standards in the industry, and those standards change over time. Technology changes over time. Our approach to managing the plants improves with the passage of time. Bull Run will operate through 2023. It still plays a very important role, even as we prepare to close that plant. Although it doesn't run at the capacity it did one, one day in the past, it supports voltage and frequency and the reliability of the power system in eastern Tennessee. And although it, in the long run, is no longer economical and we'll close it, we have some transmission improvements to do that are necessary if we're going to retire that plant and still maintain the high level of reliability that we all enjoy here now. In terms of coal ash, this is a topic that I'm, I'm determined TVA will set the industry standard with respect to, and that we'll do it transparently and openly, and we'll do it in collaboration with the communities that we serve. This probably disposing of coal ash is a national issue. As I said, it's a deferred cost associated with the benefit that we all received over 50 years of operation of these plants, and we have to do it responsibly. I told the, the group earlier today that there are really four major streams of activity going on here. After the Kingston Ash Pond failure, a failure that never should have happened, and we are determined will never happen again, TVA implemented a dam safety program to make sure every one of these dams, whether they're holding back coal ash or water, are, are, are as they should be. And that effort is complete, and you should have confidence in the physical condition out there at Bull Run. The second was to convert from wet ash handling to dry ash handling. This lowers the environmental risk and impact and prepares the site for better management long-term, and we're finishing that effort across our system, including Bull Run, which is nearing completion. The third is to make sure we're using state-of-the-art equipment to handle all the process water, whether it's coming from ash ponds or the coal pile or the plant itself, and we treat that water to the highest standards before it's returned to the river. And that's much of what we toured folks and showed them today, because we're well into the process of installing those water processing systems at Bull Run, and that will finish up over the coming months. And then lastly, that we make good decisions about how to manage that coal ash in the long-term as we close and decommission that site. And that process is underway, and it is a very detailed science and engineering-oriented process. We have engineering and environmental investigations underway right now to, to characterize the hydrology, the geology, the nature of that ash, the surrounding environments, to come to a decision about how to disposition all that. And that decision is, is a site-specific decision, because the best path forward has to be the best path forward at Bull Run. Not a generic conclusion, but a Bull Run-specific conclusion. We recently reached that conclusion at Gallatin, and we made some announcements last week that laid out that path forward. We haven't made that decision with Bull Run because that decision isn't right. We have additional study to do and monitoring, and that will take place over the coming months. And one of the things we're determined to do is make sure you all have information as that data is collected, as that analysis is done, as those options are developed, and that, and that we involve you in that. We'd also like to make sure that the information that has to be made available, should be made available to the general public, is, is done clearly. TVA is one of the most transparent and most highly overseen enterprises here in the Valley, but it's overseen by multiple agencies, the EPA, OSHA, TDEC, and there are dozens of processes that we go through as we collect data and as we analyze it. So it's all out there to be looked at. It's just not always in a form that, that our citizens can, can collect up and make sense of. And so we're looking to work with you all to make sure that we put that data out there, not just as it is in the regulatory process, but as it needs to be so that people can absorb it and, and understand it. So thank you for the time. What I'd like you to take away from this is that the Bull Run facility is a well-run plant. We understand the condition there. The condition is, there is not threatening your drinking water or the environment, but we need to make sure that continues to be the case. So we're studying it. We'll make sure we make the correct decision for the long-term, and we'd like your involvement as we work through that process. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll stop there, and I'll thank you, as I, I know you've attended our board listening sessions and, and patiently sat through those. And so I, I'd, I know your time is of the essence here, but I'd be happy to answer questions if you'd like me to. Otherwise, I'll just say good evening, and I get, I look forward to getting to know each of you.
Well, I think, and again, thank you for the comments and compliment. I was very impressed. I'm sure many of the commissioners that attended today were very impressed with, with the presentation. And one thing was clear to me is there's going to be communication going forward and lots of dialogue, lots of more meetings, and it's not a shut-the-door type issue and walk-away. And, and I think that misinformation has played a negative role here recently, but I think we're going to work together, and I appreciate what you're doing, I appreciate what TVA's doing. And I'll just say this, I mean, it's just a, an idea, and I know this decision way down the line, when the facility's decommissioned and whatnot, and the final decision on the ashes, but we're going to need a school in our district. Claxton's been there over 100 years, I think it has been, and I'd like for TVA to consider something at the Bull Run facility. And I think it would be great to have something, like a STEM Academy of some sort. And maybe we build our future leaders who will look at, you know, different types of energy and things of that nature, and obviously team up with our friends from Oak Ridge and, and the city of Clinton too. But just something to think about, and I appreciate your time. And again, we'll have many more meetings, and I know you've had a very, very busy, long day yourself, and I really appreciate you coming today.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and to your, to your point, in the long-term, as we decommission, dismantle that plant, and get to an acceptable disposal plan for the ash, we'd like to see that site developed in a way that supports the economy and the citizens here in Anderson County.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Appreciate you all coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's continue on. Now, we're going to go to the parents and citizens. If there's any citizens that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, come on up, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. Anybody would like to approach the... Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, County Commission, good evening. My name is Justin Bailey. I'm the president of the Anderson County Fire Chiefs Association. Just want to give a brief one thank you for your continued support of all the county fire departments and the rescue squad. As part of the association, we're 501(c)(3). Our job is to help with operations and support of the county fire departments as a whole. Part of that is fundraising. For the first time in three years, we are going to be doing a sportsman's raffle. Each one of those raffles, you'll see several members in throughout the community selling these tickets right here. $5 apiece. We'll give you three chances to hopefully win a firearm of some kind. If, for some reason, I know several members of our county community does not like firearms or does not support the use of firearms, we understand that as well. We also gladly accept donations in the lieu of purchase of a ticket. The proceeds for this will be going to training and operations for all the county departments to be able to support and fund from. So I just want to make that announcement to you guys. Hopefully, after the meeting, maybe some of you can help support, and I've got them on me if you guys want to purchase.
Thank you very much, Chief Bailey. Appreciate it. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you very much. And thank you, Justin, for stepping forward and speaking on behalf of, of the fire departments. Just to kind of drill into everybody's heads, majority of the volunteers firefighters that are out there are wearing their father's or even perhaps their grandfather's bunker gear. If you saw the news clip this past weekend, nearly 70% of the firefighters that are wearing dirty bunker gear are, are chancing themselves of getting some sort of cancer. It's from the chemicals that are, that are in these fires now, whether it's an automobile or a house or what's put in the back end of a, an 18-wheeler. You never know what, what they're having to deal with. They need gear. These volunteer firefighters in our county, in Anderson County, need help, whether it's, you know, like I said, the bunker gear, the gloves, the hoses that they use. Tickets are all of $5 apiece. Like Justin said, if you don't want what's out there for a chance to win, write "Donate" on it. They need the money bad. The drawing is going to be held on the October, October 19th. Please support them.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Thank you, Chief Bailey. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Any other appearance of citizens? State your name, your address, and you've got three minutes. Thank you.
April Perry, 90 Dairy Pond Road, Norris. I just wanted to speak to the Moore School Commission. I know some of you guys were, were not here earlier. I would just want to speak in, in support of the school systems. I am a teacher. I'm the president of Anderson County Education Association. I'm also a, an airman from the Tennessee Air National Guard. I'm stationed at Miggy Tyson. I do want to say just a few things about the teaching profession. It is very rewarding in a lot of different ways. It's not rewarding as far as money goes. Most people know that. Unfortunately, because of that, according to the statistics, about 50% of new teachers find a new profession within the first five years of teaching, which is very unfortunate. Everyone knows that all the other school systems around us, most of them make more money than the Anderson County school teachers. I would just want to speak in support of the school systems. I am a teacher. I'm the president of Anderson County Education Association. I'm also an airman from the Tennessee Air National Guard. I'm stationed at McGee Tyson. I do want to say just a few things about the teaching profession. It is very rewarding in a lot of different ways. It's not rewarding as far as money goes, most people know that. Unfortunately, because of that, according to the statistics, about 50% of new teachers find a new profession within the first five years of teaching, which is very unfortunate. Everyone knows that all the other school systems around us, most of them make more money than the Anderson County schoolteachers. I have taught for, I believe, 16 years in this county, I've taught at other counties. But I can tell you that we are a great bunch of teachers, and I'll include myself in that. But unfortunately, you know, we are in desperate need of a raise. We asked for 4%. The board has seen fit to include 2% in the budget, and I would really like to encourage you all to vote for the school systems. One of the things that I always joke about is I can make a lot more money deployed for six months in the Middle East, and that is true, than I can make teaching. And I even unfortunately joke about hoping that we'll get an RPG attack, because that's an extra $2.50 a month when we actually get attacked. So that's kind of sad, if you think about it. But I would appreciate for you to support the school systems. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Any other citizens like to speak before commission, on any item that's not on the agenda? All right. Moving along. Approval and correction of agendas, consent agenda. Have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, regular agenda.
Does this resolution, Jay, does this resolution 1906-762 need to be added to the agenda? I don't see where it's listed.
No, sir, it's under my report.
Okay. I didn't see it listed there, if I'm missing it?
Should have walking horse trail.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Have a motion to approve the regular agenda as presented by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Did you need to make a motion, sir?
No, I just, I was going to make the motion.
Good question, though. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, committee reports. Purchasing report by Catherine Ashmary, deputy purchasing agent. Catherine?
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Under contracts approved by the law director, we have two. For your consideration, would you like to consider them as a group or individually?
Pleasure of the commission.
Motion as a group?
Have a motion to approve as a group, Commissioner Mead.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Did you mean to second it? All right. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, contracts pending law director approval. We just have one copier lease for our office, and it's actually now been approved by Jay, submitting for your approval.
Motion by Commissioner Isabel, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion?
I want to congratulate them for getting it cheaper than last year.
Good comment.
Thanks.
Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under other business, we have a request to donate a magnifying lamp to the Anderson County Water Authority, submitting for your approval.
I was kind of eyeing that lamp, because I've got a father-in-law that would love that thing. But we have a motion, is this new motions on the board? Motion by Commissioner Isabel, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The only other thing under new business is LeAnn forwarded an email, I'm not sure if everybody read it today, about the auction for the Tuppertown property, closed on Saturday for a total of $91,500, which is well above what was projected to close at. So I don't know if y'all want to formally approve that amount. I don't think it was required when it was set to surplus, but...
Commissioner Denenberg, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Mead. Well, let's go ahead. Commissioner Mead, are you going to make a motion on this?
I just make a motion to approve the sale price.
I have a motion to approve the sales price. Is that your second, Commissioner Scott?
Yes, it is.
Second now, let's have discussion. Commissioner Denenberg?
Well, I was told that the price was higher than that. What was the actual full price of the contract?
Ninety-one. It was a plus the 10%.
Commissioner Mead?
That's what I was asking.
I have the contract right here in my hand. What comes to commission is 91,500. The buyer pays a $9,150 fee, okay? That's paid by the buyer. And so the buyer actually paid $10650.
That's the number I wanted to hear, because that's what I was told. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Any other questions on the motion? Commissioner Mead, your motion is to accept the contract as presented, and the sale of the property.
Yeah, because the sale was subject to final approval by full commission. I recommend making a motion that we approve the sale.
And that's your second, right, Commissioner Scott? Just go one more time, make sure there's no other questions, any comments. Mary, did you have anything to add? Okay. You want to go to the board? Let's just do a voice fill. All in favor, say, well, let's go to the board, they've already cleaned it. Let's vote as yes to sell, no is to not. 14 yes, motion unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have. I don't know if anybody has any other questions about purchasing-related items.
Where do we stand on 205 Main?
That auction closes on July 15th.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next is the finance report by Rodney Holbrook, interim finance director. Rodney, sir?
Robbie.
Robbie, sorry. I got Rodney on there.
It's all right.
Sorry, Robbie. I know he's a holebroke.
He is. Same family.
That's right.
First off, with the finance committee minutes, actually, usually the finance committee's on the consent agenda, but tonight it was put on the regular agenda, so I just really need a motion for commission to approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion? Let's use your buttons, there you go. Commissioner Isabel has a motion, and seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion on the approval of the finance minutes as presented? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the budget. Committee minutes. First of all, we'll do the cash and fund balance report for May. There it is. Reading along the general fund line, restricted funds are at 1.4 million, committed funds 2.7 million, assigned funds 805,808, unassigned fund balance is at 3.6 million, total fund balance 8.6 million, cash is at 12,487,368. I would like to point out that the unassigned fund balance is below the 4 million watermark that require a two-thirds vote to get any budget amendments approved tonight, so we'll need 11 votes, or two-thirds of the commission here, I guess.
And that minimum balance is, is it?
Four million.
I'm sorry, just reconfirming.
Yes.
Any questions for Robbie on this balance that's presented before us? Moving on. Thank you.
I'd like to submit group two appropriations for the school department. There's actually only one. It's page 21 in your minutes, number 49, for central cafeteria for $5,000.
Have a motion to approve? Have a motion by Commissioner Isabel, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion on group two?
Group two. Group two.
Page 21, item 49, central cafeteria fund 143, school nutrition program, $5,000. Any other discussion, any questions? Let's go to the board and vote on these, requires a board vote. Yes is to approve. Motion carries unanimous, 14. Go ahead, Robbie, thank you, sir.
Before I submit group three, the transfers from the school department, they have three corrections on their budget amendments from the budget meeting that they had to have approved from their school, by their school board. So we'll have to do all three of those individually. It's 44, 45, and 47. I can pass out the corrections if you'd like for me to, to each of you all.
It's a pleasure of the board. Yeah, go ahead and pass them out, so we can have them anyway. Thank you, Robbie. So Robbie, I imagine you'd like to pass the group without these three, and we'll come back to those three, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And it's got the full board in front of it.
Thank you.
So group three is a group except for 44, 45, and 47, unless somebody wants to pull another one out.
Commissioner Scott has a question?
Yes, it's item number 53, please.
You'd like to pull it, or you have a question?
I just, I would, I know that Rex is here, and I'd just like him to elaborate on that, please.
We're not on that yet, we're in schools.
Sorry.
That's non-school, I'm sorry.
It went to the next page, sorry about that. I'll wait.
It's at the very bottom, it's hard.
Yeah, it goes to four.
Do we have a motion to approve Commissioner Isabel? Approve as a group? Yes, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on the group as a whole minus 44, 45, and 47? Seeing no discussion, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Okay, moving on to the individual items, number 44. The first one on your page is a transfer major line item from career technical education. It's $4,000 from travel to instructional supplies.
So it's just a move of the funds, is that correct?
Yes, sir. From one, from a major, from one code to another, it's to pay for student competition travel for national competitions, and Health Science Technology Student Association, early childhood education in Microsoft Competition Anaheim, California.
Thank you, Robbie. We've got a motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve, sir? Seconded by Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on item 44? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimous, 14-0. 45, Robbie?
All right, 45 is a transfer. It includes payroll and a major line item, so it's from the physical services. Transfer in $87,000, increasing the medical personnel code by $75,000 in the Social Security, retirement, and Medicare, and decreasing their medical insurance code.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smallridge to approve, 45, sir? Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes, 14-0, unanimous.
All right, and number 47 is a transfer with payroll and a major line item from the physical services. It's increasing officer principal $95,200, officer principal, assistant principals by $80,200, and the fringe benefits that go along with it, Social Security, employer, Medicare, and travel. And it's decreasing regular instruction, 115, 26406, officer principal secretaries by $42,000, medical insurance 323, and unemployment by 1,100.
Thank you. Got a motion by Commissioner McCamey to approve, Commissioner? Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Scott?
Yes, sir, thank you. Since Dr. Parrott is here, I'd like him to explain to everyone at home the transfer request of $191,313, please.
So when we have principals and that get new degrees during the middle of the year, then we start paying those in January. And another thing was, is we're putting our principals, our principals in Anderson County have for years not worked a 240-day contract, and we're moving more of them to a 260-day. And the board voted to move three of them last year to a 260-day contract, and we failed to put that in the budget. We had it in another code, and we had to move it to that other code. So there's no new positions in there, it's just giving them the raises they got for degrees and for that moving 240 to 260.
But thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott, thank you, Commissioner Scott. Any other questions on item 47? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimous, 14-0.
Okay. I'm submitting group four appropriations, non-school. I'm going to commission approval by a board vote, as a group or individually?
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. And it's at the end of that first page, is where it says group four appropriations. I was asking for item number 53 to be pulled, simply for Rex to explain what the $45,000 is.
Okay. Oh, he's sitting right out here.
Want to address that first, before we take up the group?
Sure.
Was there a question?
Yes. I'm asking, you gave us a great explanation during the budget committee about the $45,000 request, and I'd like for you to explain it to everyone here.
This initiated from, we're planning on opening it up, I think the county's getting ready to open up one of the final pod there at the Anderson County Jail. We've got a lot of records, I've got a few records, Hal Cousins has got the majority of records there. So we need to find a place to put these records. We've also got some records that were out of space for the, you know, a lot of the Clinton general sessions, criminal, and the circuit records as well. So we've got two or three rooms that I've kind of got control of down at Oak Ridge, where the general sessions, two courtrooms are located. But one of the rooms, we've taken it, we've cleaned it all out, we've already got some juvenile court records and part of it, but we've got it all ready to go. And so for the last two or three months, I've talked to several different vendors about how to do some high-density, mobile shelving systems in there, so we'll get the most, you know, the most files we can get in there that we can. And so basically, working with the budget office, I went back, and we found four different codes that were, that are basically, we've got more money coming in this year than we had projected. And so we're taking that revenue, and I think $45,000 should fund the purchase and installation. And that'll probably take care, as far as the records from the Clinton courts, probably the next, you know, six to 10 years, probably will take care of our record storage areas. Hal's got a small portion of that room, and he thinks it'll take care of probably about three or four years for him. So I think it's a good plan, it's high-density storage, it's going to take care of some records issues for some time to go, it's not just putting a Band-Aid on it.
Have a motion by Jameson to approve, sir?
Thank you.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Scott for bringing it up, thank you, Rex, for the clarification. I think we need to go, well, we're not going to take up, is the motion, Mr. Jameson, to prove as a group, or just that one item? Just the one item, item 53 there? Okay? Yes, sir. Is that your understanding there, Commissioner McCamey?
I thought we were... The group.
Yes, sir. It's group four.
There's 20.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the group, then, as a whole? So your motion is to approve group four as a group, including item 53, which has already been discussed, and McCamey seconded it. Any other discussion on the whole group before we move on? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Group four as a whole. Motion passes unanimous, 14-0. Thank you, Rex.
Moving on to group five, submitting group five transfers, non-school, as a group or individually?
It's a pleasure of the committee.
As a group, please.
Motion by Commissioner Scott to prove as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussions on any items in group five? Let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to approve the whole group? Motion passes unanimous, 14-0.
All right, in group six, we only have one budget amendment for number 64, page 28, for $750.
Have a motion to approve item 64 under group six. Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on item 64, $750? Let's go to the board, requires board vote. Motion passes, 14-0, unanimous.
All right, and group seven is miscellaneous, it's the new budget proposals, that section of our budget committee meeting, and actually, all I need... that section of our Budget Committee meeting, and actually, all I need is this formality, just passing the minutes, and that doesn't mean you agree with the minutes, you're just passing or agreeing to the minutes.
Are you sure?
That's what I heard two meetings ago.
You're, you're recorded, so we got you. Alright, so just need a motion to, to pass the minutes from the budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any further discussion on the minutes for the budget process there? Don't think it requires a board vote, do you want one or just voice vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose, motion carries?
And just, the next meeting is a special call meeting on June twenty-seventh at four. Will be strictly about the budget, so that wasn't on the calendar.
That meeting on June twenty-seventh, is it, is it for Jerry and yourself? Is it for full commission or is this another budget?
It's full commission.
Okay, so this is the public meeting where full commission will meet and will discuss the budget as presented to us?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the twenty-seventh of this month?
At four P.M.
At four P.M., thank you, Robbie.
That does, it's more than ten.
And we'll get proper notification out? Annette?
That's ten days.
It's twenty days from when we first, I've got the rules in here, twenty days from your first, when we publicly put it in the paper and I had it approved by Jay also. Right, I sent it to our law director and he also approved the dates. Okay. Okay, group eight is additional items not discussed during Budget Committee, these are some budget amendments that were, didn't get in in time for the meeting and were presented kind of late, so we're doing those tonight also. The first one's just a transfer from the library for eleven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars from books and magazines to communications.
It's a pleasure of the board. Have a motion to approve, Commissioner Anderson? Yes, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on item A under group eight for, yes?
This is just an internal transfer using money within the library system.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Any other, any other discussion? Requires a board vote? Fourteen yes, motion passes unanimous.
Okay. The next three are from the Sheriff's Department, the first one being a transfer that includes payrolls, it's from the deputy overtime code decreasing one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents and increasing the supervisor code, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. This transfer will cover the final week of fiscal year, this week was not factored at the time of the transfer in September.
Fifty-one. Alright, so are we doing just one item?
Just one item, because the first one's a transfer and the other two are appropriations.
Item B.
Yes, thirty-nine, page thirty-nine, item B.
Yes, sir, okay. And it's page, let's see here? Yes, but it's page fifty-one on our
Yes.
iPad here. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, as to approve, sir, I'm sure. Any discussions on that item B under group eight? General Fund one-on-one Sheriff's Department transfer slash payroll of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. No discussion, let's go to the board, requires board vote. Motion passes unanimous, fourteen-zero.
Okay, and forty C is appropriation from the Sheriff's Department, they're increasing insurance recovery for four thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents and putting it in a motor vehicle code, the same amount. It's insurance money for damages caused by accidents.
I have a motion by Commissioner Denenberg to approve, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Wonder what we're waiting on? Oak Creasy?
I thought I did.
You did, you're just keeping us on our toes.
I was ahead of the
Yes, sir.
I was ahead of
Alright, motion passes fourteen-zero.
Okay, and the last one from the Sheriff's Department is an appropriation from unassigned fund balance. It's three hundred thousand dollars, decreasing unassigned and increasing jail and medical, jail, medical, and dental three hundred thousand. I would like to add too, that we're expecting a reimbursement from the state for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand for this, but to get the code in, out of the red, in case the state money doesn't come in in time, we need to do this and then we'll repay unassigned.
We'll explain, thank you, Robbie.
When do you expect that check to arrive?
Well, Tyler keeps telling me any day.
Don't go out, Robbie, tell me things.
Because I keep looking for it. When do you expect that check to arrive?
Any day. No, we thought we would get it this week. We're hopeful it'll come in this week, so.
Rex has a collector that's doing a bang-up job, you may want to
Yeah, we, we may take it, Commissioner Val and I may go down to Nashville Wednesday if it's not here. Save some delivery fees on their part.
Just have him bring his Elvis, get up just as backup.
Oh, that's always a requirement.
If he breaks that out, they'll have to pay double.
That's right.
Okay, let's get a motion on the, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Smallridge to approve, sir? Yes. Seconded by Commissioner Denenberg, any, any further discussion on this item? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes fourteen-zero.
Alright, and the last item I have for you tonight is a budget amendment from the law director's office. The firewall that we had restricted the funds, we're going to unrestrict the funds because he wants to start ordering parts to get to work on that, so just let him be able to order the parts in this fiscal year.
Okay. Under group eight, item E, thirteen thousand dollars. As you pointed out, these were funds that had been set aside, just never were utilized. Law director would like to use them now to, okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Mead, any discussion on this item? Alright, let's go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no's, motion passes.
Okay, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Robbie, great job. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Holbrook before he leaves? Thank you, sir, no, very good, have a good evening. Alright, next, Director's Schools, any questions for Director's Schools, his package was in the consent agenda? Dr. Parrott, is there anything you'd like to say or address? Commissioner Anderson, yes, sir?
Could you explain on the last two years how you funded the Chromebooks? I think there had been some questions about
We funded our Chromebooks out of our undesignated reserve for the last two years. And, and we funded, we, we were, we're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short this year, so we'll have to fund that out of our undesignated again this year.
Out of your, okay, and so that's affected, right now, the, the two years that the county's not paid's kind of affected you that way? Okay, I just wanted to, there, there, I've heard some, had some questions about that in the last few weeks, so I just wanted to get clarification.
Hey, just, just one thing, I, I will say, since I got up there, I get to brag on the schools. We've got our preliminary graduation rate, it's right at ninety-five percent, we've still got some appeals that we're working on, but when, when the state's at like ninety percent, it were at ninety-five, and, and that includes, when you think about graduation rate, that includes every person that entered in the ninth grade.
Wow.
And that is every student. That is special ed students, that, that is our CDC students, that's every student, because if they don't get a regular ed diploma, even though they're a special ed student, they're considered a dropout. And that's something we fought with the state for, and every one of those students have to have a scorable ACT test. So, that's pretty good, ninety-five percent, so they did a great job. Our graduation, that graduating class has, has the scholarship. Right now, they've been, they've been awarded a little over fifteen million dollars this year in scholarship, so we're excited about that, so. Got a lot, a lot of work going on with ESG this summer. We, we've got nine, we've got eight of our elementary schools that have four weeks of our summer camp. As you saw, that was something that Governor, Governor Haslam put in, it's called Read to Be Ready, it's for first, second, and third graders that, that need some extra help with reading, our reading scores have really shot up, and that was not in the budget for next year. If you get a chance, our legislators, they need to put that in the budget, because we've got the schools, we've got the quality staff, all we got to do is just fund for the materials and to, and to pay our teachers a little money. And, and that is a great program, so if you get a chance, you need to go out to some of our schools and watch. Some of them are actually doing it with no air conditioning, because as you know, we're changing a lot of air conditioners out this summer, so it's a great, great camp. Thank you.
We've got a couple more questions, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I had got something else, but I think it's later on in the agenda somewhere.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner White, sir?
Dr. Parrott? Two or three years ago, we, following up on Josh's question, I thought this commission agreed to fund the Chromebooks, and we did one year.
You, you did, it was a three-year, I asked for three years.
Yes, sir.
And, and when I came back before the Budget Committee the next year, they, they asked me if we could fund it out of our undesignated reserve, and we did. So we just got funding for one year.
And I guess I'm, I'm, we agreed to do it, and then we didn't do it. And I, I guess I, we dropped the ball somewhere and I was
Well, and, and I think what, the conversation I had with, with, they're not on commission now, the conversation I had with him is that y'all had some things you needed to do that year also, and we were in, we were in a pretty good shape, and, and we want to work together with that. And, and, and I think we've, we've done a good job with that, so now I'm coming asking for the other money, so you just fund my six cents and don't worry about the Chromebooks.
Ah, good question, I agree with you, Commissioner. My, my thought was
If you don't fund the six cents, I'm coming back with my eight hundred thousand, so.
I'd rather fund the Chromebooks. But that's another story, hang on, hang on, we've got a couple more here, good question, Commissioner White, and I appreciate that. I was under the assumption we funded it all too, but I don't know what happened, you explained it, but Commissioner Jaeger, sir?
Dr. Parrott, the ESG project?
Yes.
How much in savings is that expected to be over the
It is, the first one was cost neutral, this one's going to cost us, we think, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but we're going to have about six hundred thousand in savings to offset that.
And that money is being, since there's, there's no expenses?
That money goes in to pay that debt, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that debt is for how many years?
It's for twenty years.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So it goes, it, it funds that whole project, we, the ESG project, both projects are completely funded out of, out of local, out of our school budget. We're, we're working right now with CUB to some of our, and, I may get this wrong, some, some of the places we've, we've lowered the demand for electricity so much that now we're getting caught because there's, I guess, years ago, they put in these things that you had to pay so much, whether you used the electricity or not, so we're going back and having to renegotiate with CUB to bring some of those down. So, we've hit some of those, which is a good thing for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner McCamey?
Dr. Parrott, didn't we use the money that we had set aside for purchase of property for industrial development? We had like two cents?
Yeah, it's three cents.
Three cents in the budget?
Yep.
And didn't we vote as a body to use that three cents to fund the Chromebooks?
Yes, yes. The next year, I think it was used for, I think it was used for either police cars or for, for a an ambulance or something, I don't know what it was used for, but that three cents was used for something else that next year.
Okay, is that three cents still in the budget as it's proposed this year for industrial development? Property purchase?
It's still in there, I would, I would guess it was in there.
Well, I thought that would, that would offset the Chromebook cost if we, if we took that three cents that we had for industrial development.
Yeah, a penny and a half went to EMS last year.
Okay, is Robbie already gone for the day?
I think he did, yeah.
Okay, we'll look at that before we meet on the twenty-seventh, because we may need to redo something with that to help with the Chromebooks, that we didn't didn't pony up what we were supposed to last year, so.
We've got, we've got one more year, we've been putting, we've been adding, when we first started this week, we only had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in technology money, and we knew it cost about four fifty to five hundred thousand to phone Chromebooks. We are up this year in our budget, we have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is recurring in our budget. So we're about a hundred thousand off, and, and next year, we hope to add that other, about seventy-five to a hundred thousand in our budget. We've been doing fifty to a hundred thousand every year to try to get that up so we can sustain that. Because once you start, you can't stop. I mean, we have no more computer labs in our school, so we've got to, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, so we thank you for that.
Well, I thought that we had taken that money and, and moved it from there to, to the Chromebooks, and I don't understand why we didn't fund it, but maybe, like I said, we used it for something else.
And it was four hundred and fifty thousand, and then, like you say, on, on that, there was, we got two hundred and eighty thousand, Oak Ridge got part of that, and then Clinton City got part of that. We got, we get fifty-six percent of whatever that was.
I think it makes sense, Commissioner McCamey, to go back and look at that motion. Maybe we dig that up, get rid of that, and pull up the motion to see what the original motion was and what the understanding was, because I was like you.
I mean, if we made a motion and then we came along and made a different motion without rescinding the original motion, you know, really, we should have rescinded the earlier motion, because we had actually taken that three cents, I thought, and, you know, designated for Chromebooks to the school system instead of to the county general fund. So, we'll, we'll go back and look at that, I'll, I'll get with Robbie and we'll know something before the twenty-seventh. I think we did it during the Budget Committee last year, or year before last, maybe two years ago, when we approved the budget, we took the three cents out of industrial development into, to furnish the Chromebooks. No, we, we voted to move it, and so there would be no money going into industrial development on that, but, you know.
For that one year? And then this year, where's it at?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know.
We'll look at the motion and see what it said. Commissioner Isabel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With two of my constituents, which happens to be Jim Woodward and his wife, and we're actually in Oak Ridge and investing in Anderson County, sales tax, but I had probably a forty-five minute conversation with him down there inside the store, and we talked about the situation, and he told me that if they had that eight hundred thousand that we had committed to, that they wouldn't be in this situation now and wouldn't need the tax increase. And that was the conversation that we'd had in the store, that eight hundred thousand was what really put the burden on the school, you know, where they had to come up and fund it, where we had originally agreed to fund that. So, I think if you had your eight hundred thousand, that would probably look pretty good, or even be a less of a
Yeah, be a, be a less of a, a less of a burden, it's not, it, it's not a recurring, that's, the problem is, it's not recurring, it's one-time money for the raises.
Any other comments? Thank you, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody need a break? I think, I think we have a commissioner that does need a break. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll be right back, so five minutes.
For too many decades, Tennessee has ranked in the bottom 10 among the least healthy states. But because thousands of people across the state are joining the movement to be more active, eat better, and reduce tobacco use, we are creating a healthier Tennessee. That movement has taken hold here in Anderson County, where a local committee has led a grassroots effort to achieve the governor's foundation for health and wellness, Healthier Tennessee Community Designation.
Act of Anderson was lucky enough to receive funding from the Healthier Tennessee Communities Initiative. With the support of community programs, we are looking to increase healthy physical activity, better nutrition, including run clubs and competitive track events, gardening, tobacco education, and focusing on prevention of new smokers.
This movement doesn't end with a designation. In fact, it's only building. To get involved with the Act of Anderson Committee, visit facebook.com/ActofAndersonTN.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Commissioner McCamey almost beat me back to my seat. I think the next item we are on is county mayor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have no action items tonight, but because you had the special call meeting next week, I did put a couple of things on there just to make you aware in case we wanted to increase funding for electronic monitoring, the cost-sharing program, and then also just a kernel or a nugget there for you to think about. I included the RFP for the city of Oak Ridge for their compensation plan. And then I also included, I know Commissioner Creasy especially likes to get the notification for the IDB tax year summary, that is included in your agenda, but I have no action items on my report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for Mayor Frank? Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next, law director, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of commission, always my honor to be with you. Just a few action items for you to consider tonight, referencing my written report that you have in front of you. Does anybody have any questions on the contract approvals that flowed through our office this past month? Section A. Okay, looking at section B, the indigent death, I wanted to mention to you an arrangement we've now got with Holly Gamble Funeral Home, and I'm very appreciative of this. The Gambles have come forward offering to help in this indigent cremation. They're partners in a crematorium down in Maryville, and they've dropped the price that the county would have to pay in these rare cases, dropped it $50, and also agreed to do the transportation fee. So that's roughly a $90 saving over the other crematorium that we were using. So hats off to Holly Gamble, John Gamble, for helping us out. They stepped forward on their own, wanting to help the county, just great people, great citizens, but thank you very much to those folks. I wanted to give you an update on the barn at Williams Manor. If you do recall, that's the place down off Mahoney Road that we've had several complaints about over the past year. The Board of Zoning Appeals took up the review of the special exception permit on May 23rd, and after a couple of hours of testimony, they decided to revoke that special exception. We do believe there'll probably be a lawsuit against the county. The attorney that represents the Williams, they did not even make a case at the BZA meeting. They were given the opportunity to come and put on witnesses and make a case. They refused to do that. Even after the hearing took place, I gave them an opportunity to submit a position statement before the minutes were approved, and they didn't do that. But they've now filed a public records request with the mayor's office for all our documents on that. But anyway, the chairman of the BZA is Commissioner White, did an excellent job in holding that hearing, and I do appreciate you, Jerry. But anyway, I've got one action item related to that. You know, we've got the Neighborhood Compliance Group composition. The BZA has approved three names there. We still don't have a name for the representatives of the barn. I've got three people there. Our county representative would be Steve Mead, with an alternate of Nicole Brooks, and a community representative, Jacob Plattfoot. All these people have to live within a one-mile radius of the barn, but I would submit those for your approval tonight. They have been approved previously by the BZA.
Commissioner McCamey motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Discussion, Commissioner Me?
I discovered after looking into this in some detail that I live 1,200 feet from the barn, and I'm way up on a hill, I'm probably 100 feet higher in elevation looking down over that valley. And if it wasn't for one about 200-foot-high oak tree, I would be able to also see them. And so if they have very loud music, I can just step onto my deck, and I can tell you.
Is it 1,200 feet or 1,200 yards?
1,200 feet. 400 yards, four...
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other questions? So Jay, the special exemption...
Exception, yes, sir.
Exception. So are they still allowed to, at this time, carry on wedding, or that's, you're saying that's been removed?
That's been removed, sir.
Okay, I was just curious. Any other questions? Commissioner McCamey.
Does the minutes have to be approved by the board before that's effective? Because they had...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The minutes have been approved, sir.
They have been?
Yes, sir.
When did that happen?
At the BZA meeting last Tuesday.
Okay, so they had another one this weekend.
Did they?
Yeah. I got a call about it.
We've asked the neighbors to do the same thing they've been doing, submit affidavits to us. They've been doing a very good job with that. We've got one neighbor that's got an ANZ certified noise meter that's been taking measurements of the noise down there, and we've got, I don't know, Jerry, at least two dozen affidavits from the, that we put on the record during the hearing on May 23rd.
Any other questions, comments? So the motion on the floor, McCamey, is what? As presented?
As presented by the law director.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Any other questions on that issue? Yes, sir.
The BZA ruling, do we need to verify that or confirm it?
No, sir.
Very good.
There's case law that says you can, so. But anyway, they did an excellent job, and I appreciate their service.
Thank you, Jerry.
A very difficult case for those folks. On item D there, the lawsuit update, many of you have been up here for several years. We had a case, 2009 it started, Pethnall versus DCS in Anderson County. I know some of the sheriff's deputies probably remember this case. We got sued. I think eight of our officers were sued, along with DCS officers. There were several children taken into custody. There was a stay put down by the court, and that's just been lifted last week. So I wanted to let you know that case is just in a holding pattern for all these years, and it's back on schedule, and we'll go to trial with that case. But I do support all the actions the sheriff's department took that night. It was a very difficult dilemma they were facing, but I've reviewed it very closely, and they did an excellent job in a very difficult situation. I wanted to just, no actions needed there. Item E is the update on Walking Horse Trail. If you recall, Walking Horse Trail is the street we've been talking about now for several months in the Arcadian Springs subdivision. You've got a resolution before you tonight to vote up or down. That resolution has been reviewed by the mayor and Mr. Long. What that allows us to do is for Mr. Long to do the work, finish all the work that was required by the planning commission on the original plat. If you recall, we had to forfeit the funds. The original developer went into fault. We cashed all the surety bonds that were in place. We ran short of completing all those roads and the stormwater work. This resolution allows the highway department to do that work at a significant discount from us having to contract it out. department to do that work at a significant discount from us having to contract it out. They'll do all the work that the planning commission mandated, all the work to bring all that road up to county road standards, subdivision regulations, and also our stormwater regulations. But this resolution will allow us to save a lot of money, and most importantly, take care of a lingering issue that's been haunting these neighbors up there for years, or for at least over a year. I also wanted to tell you, one of the major concerns with the three families that live on that street now is what happens in emergency. Can we find them if they call E-911? Mark Lucas was very instrumental in us running a test on this a couple of weeks ago, and Ms. Moran, she went to her home with a cellphone, and the E-911 system mapped that within 100 feet. I watched it, that's how accurate that system is, and she was calling from a cellphone. Mark Lucas has got every one of those houses mapped. They've been sent into the National Street Assignment Guide, they had been for months. You may have heard some of the complaints that, hey, it's not on Google Maps and all this. Well, we don't have any control over that. Google buys this information, and it's up to them to update their maps. But Mark has assured me, he's talked to the post office in Andersonville. There'll be no problem there as far as getting mail. Yes, they could run into problems getting UPS or FedEx or something like that if they don't buy a listing off the National Street Assignment Guide, but as far as an emergency response, we've got that taken care of, and I witnessed it personally. Mark Lucas is right on the ball there. Again, the call came in within 100 feet of where she was at, so we feel very comfortable about that. There's one other resident, and there's one other individual that owns a lot next door to the brands, so we're talking about three different people there. Any questions on the resolution that you have in front of you tonight?
A motion by Commissioner Mead to pass, sir. Seconded by Commissioner Waddell. Commissioner Anderson has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for you and Mr. Lucas's work on the 911 location. That was really important to Ms. Moran. I just wanted to recognize Mr. and Ms. Moran, they've been here at the meeting tonight, and they've been the most affected by this issue. For about two years, they've lived there, so I just really wanted to appreciate their patience with us, and thank them for working with the county and everything on this. Glad we're getting it done.
Thank you to them, too, but I'll have to say that the mayor, and Gary Long, and of course you, Josh, and Denver, you've been excellent to get this thing off-center. And the mayor was quick to review the agreement, and Gary was too, so we could get it before you tonight, and then I sent it out yesterday. So thanks for everybody. It's great to work as a group on this issue and get it resolved for the benefit of our citizens. Any other questions on this?
Commissioner Creasy.
Jay, the original developer that we had to forfeit, has to have forfeit the bond, do they still own property there that they could develop in that subdivision?
No, sir. It's all been foreclosed on different hands. He's got a judgment against him. I don't think we'll see him back in the state.
Very good. That's what I was concerned, if he could come in now, once we bailed him out.
No, sir.
Okay.
Not at all.
Very good. That answers my question.
Good question, Commissioner Creasy.
We'd certainly attach a lien in that case, but it's not going to happen. We've got new owners.
Thank you.
Mr. Yeager?
Is there an estimated cost that we know of yet?
Gary was estimating that tonight, between 40,000, 50,000, somewhere in that range to complete all the work. And again, that's the road, that's the stormwater. We still have an issue with the utilities there. There's only one person that lives down there, the coffee's at the very end of the street. That's a substandard water line. We're not quite sure. Our regs require that six inch to be there for a fire hydrant, so we need to work with the water authority on that small issue right there.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to give you an update on the Nationwide Retirement Solution. You may be aware of this, but the Board of Trustees voted to eliminate contributions to the 457 plan that we offer our employees, and this is probably a good thing. What they did was they decided to go with TCRS, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, that all our employees have retirement with. TCRS will now be offering a 401K and a 457 plan. So our employees that do have money in these accounts with Nationwide can transfer that money over to TCRS, which is great, very simplified for our employees, a much lower rate than what Nationwide was charging, and it'll be much easier for them and their beneficiaries in the future to access that. TCRS has lower rates, and they have a website that all our employees can go to and get their retirement account information. Now they'll be able to get their 401K or 457 fund. A very good decision, I think, from the Board of Trustees on that. Those that want, we're freezing the Nationwide. For those who want to keep that Nationwide account, that's up to them, but we'll no longer be processing payroll deductions through our payroll system. The only payroll deductions we'll have is from the TCRS side. Any questions about that news? We've had some employees concerned about it. The Board of Trustees have done, HR have done a great job as far as education on this issue, and I believe moving forward, they'll see that it was a very good decision. It'll save them money in the long run, they'll get more out of their retirement accounts. I told you that by email, we pulled the resolution for John Byrd. I know a lot of you guys know John Byrd. He's been very active in the county school system for years. We're going to present that at the school board meeting. That's John Byrd with Cresso. Those of you that have come down to Blockhouse Valley with me and met Mr. Byrd, he's a remarkable man. He's been very instrumental in the remediation plans down there. But anyway, we'll honor him at the July 11th school board meeting, which is great. Last thing I want to mention to you, I've got a summer intern, Brad Pruitt. Brad, if you would, stand up. Very blessed to have Brad. Brad is a ten-year veteran of the Anderson County Sheriff's Office, so that's super. He's got a great criminal justice background. He's top of his class at LMU. Very proud to have him. He's really helping me out as far as some of the research. I can always use great workers, and I'm blessed to have two super staff members, and now I've got Brad for a few months here, and he's really helping me out. You can tell him something to get done, and it's done. He had a couple of assignments, came out of operations last week, and the very next day, he put something on my desk, so that was great to see. But anyway, if you have any questions, if you see Brad around the courthouse, you know he's helping me out. His normal job, he's still keeping his normal job with the sheriff's office, and he's still going to school. I don't know how he's doing it, but he's doing a great job balancing that difficult schedule right now through the summer. But anything I can do to answer any questions you may have on any legal issue, any pending matter, anything?
Mr. Pruitt, why don't you come on up and say hello and introduce yourself for a second?
He's a bit shy now.
Well, I've had a request, so I can't deny the request.
He's been working for Denver for a while.
Somebody over here.
But anyway, this is Brad Pruitt. You may have seen him in a sheriff's department uniform. He works for Denver a good bit, and highly recommended from Denver, so anybody comes highly recommended from Denver, I'm on board. It's hard to get that recommendation.
Wow.
Highly recommended from the sheriff, so I screened him very good. Thanks, Brad, I appreciate you volunteering.
Pressure's on, Brad.
Everything he just said is a lie. I will be around. Don't need anything, just let me know, and thank you all.
Thank you, welcome aboard. Appreciate you having me.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jay. Where are we at next here?
I'm going to go ahead and pass this agreement on Walking Horse Trail while we've got everybody here tonight, and we'll start that, get that process done.
Okay. We did vote on that, correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'll make sure I didn't miss it. Sure. Who we got next? Oh, yes, sorry. Okay, Commissioner Denenberg, Intergovernmental Committee Report. Sorry, ma'am, had to flip the page.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The members present for our meeting this past Monday were Tracy Wondell, Shannon, Shane Vowell, Tim Isabel, and Bob Smallridge. Mr. Waddell was on vacation at the beach, I believe. Mayor Frank was there, as was Jay Yeager. We had a presentation made to the entire assembled, and we had a packed room. There was standing room only for this meeting, which was extremely exciting to see. TDEC was here. We had Chuck Head, who is the Assistant Commissioner with TDEC, Robert Wilkinson, he is the Coal Ash Technical Manager, Angela Adams, she's in charge of Division of Water Resources, and Rob Burnett, who is in charge of Division of Solid Waste Management. After they finished with their PowerPoint presentation, they took questions from those that were here. We also had a couple that lives, excuse me, in the county, and she had brought a letter from Lieutenant Governor Randy McNally, which was read and submitted into the minutes, along with his Resolution 19, which was in favor of Bull Run, and not necessarily the closing of the plant, but absolutely in favor of cleaning it up and getting it to where it will become a tax source for Anderson County. The next meeting will be July 8th in this room at 5:00 PM. We have already set the agenda, and we have had people from the Norris area that have brought up another issue that they want to bring, and we will have them presenting their questions and looking for answers at that time. That's my report, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the report.
Oh, may I say one other thing very quickly?
Absolutely.
That meeting we went to with TBA today was excellent. It was very informative. I really think that we may have the opportunity to have a very good working relationship with TBA on the Bull Run project, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you for the comments. Commissioner Smallridge or Commissioner Yeager, do you have anything you'd like to add? I know you both were there.
I disagree, it was an excellent meeting. They suggested that they try to do something like that with people that live in the area who have the concerns, and right now, they need a little, have a little trust they need to strengthen with TBA, but it was a very good meeting.
Thank you for your comments. What he said, yep. And I appreciate those comments today as well, Commissioner Smallridge. Okay, we'll move on to the Operations Committee Report. Chairman Isabel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We only have two action items tonight. One was made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed forward to full commission for approval, Resolution Number 19-06-758, allowing partial payments of property taxes for the current year to be paid before the first Monday in October.
Commissioner Mead with the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner McCamey, even though I want to go with Denenberg because it's lit up.
McCamey says I could, man, he's deferring. He couldn't get it to work. That's that guy in the back, back there. Oh, he's fixed you, look here. Man, you didn't make her happy. You trumped her. All right, so a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion, which is basically, as Chairman Isabel talked about, trustee Regina came in and brought this idea, and I thought it was really done. I appreciate you bringing it up. Commissioner Mead, you have a question?
Yeah, just for your public's clarity, as strange as it may sound, it has been illegal for somebody to pay their taxes early, you know, which that seems kind of strange. It was actually illegal for them to make a payment for the taxes that would be due in February before October 1st. And so I think this is a really good move to make it easier for people to come in and make payments during the year, because the people that are really affected by this are the people that actually own their homes and don't have mortgages, because those people, they don't have somebody taking that money out every month and paying it for them. And so this allows those people, at their discretion, to come down and make regular payments, either by coming to the office or setting up a regular withdrawal from their accounts, you know, that has to be authorized. So I think it's just a fine idea.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Isabel, sorry.
Yes, just a few other items on that, and hats off to our trustee Regina Copeland, because with her doing this, the money will be invested in several different banks. But she was talking, if everything comes out just right, that's going to add about $400,000 to our general fund, just from the interest that we'll be getting off that money. So she's more than paying for her salary, for sure. But that's a good point on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Isabel, good comments. Any other questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second one was motion was made by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed forward to full commission for approval, Resolution Number 19-06-757, supporting Bresel Volunteer Fire Department's application for USDA grant loan to construct a new fire station in Bresel, Tennessee.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Vowell to pass. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good report. Let's see. Next is, man, we've made it already, old business, any old business. Okay, new business, I have one item, Comcast. There's been some discussion, and Jay, I've wanted to ask you, mentioned to the mayor, we'd like to have, is it a proper, is it proper to have a workshop or just a public hearing to allow the citizens to come in that might be having issues with trying to get Comcast wherever they may live? We'd like to have a forum for them to come to this room to meet. Would it be a workshop?
That'd be fine, but let me know your date, and I'll invite Comcast, let them have a chance. But if we do a workshop, we'll have plenty of time for citizens to come forward, make their comments, and hopefully we can get a representative from Comcast here to help them through these issues.
July, we was looking at July 10th, it's a Wednesday, it's the first, I think, full week after July 4th.
Wednesday's usually tough with church.
Yeah. About Tuesday, the 9th, is there anything going on Tuesday, the 9th, in that?
That'll be your BZA and your planning commission.
Uh huh.
Thursday's always a good alternative day.
Let's go to that Thursday, then. What is that, the 11th? What's that?
Thursday's budget.
Yeah.
But that's earlier, though, right?
Wouldn't be on the 11th.
That's four. You can do it after that day, after budget.
Budget would be on the 11th.
No, I think we'll pass on the 4th.
You're going to be here already at 4:00 PM on the 11th?
Is that the budget meeting?
Yes.
All right, so let's, I mean, what do you think, Jerry? Would you go more than two hours, you think? All right, let's, you want to set for 6 o'clock, get people, get time, get home? Let's do a Comcast workshop, 6 o'clock on July 11th.
Does that interfere with the school board meeting?
They'll have to record the public hearing. The school board will be live.
Well, if we do a workshop, how long do we got to give notice, or do?
I'd like to get 10 days on it.
Okay.
We need more than an hour, we could do it at 5:00, like we did today at our next commission meeting.
Prior to the commission meeting? Yeah, that's almost, we can't do it on the 8th, we got operations. 10 days, about...
We can try before county commission.
About June 28th. That's a Friday, though. No Friday?
July the 15th, county commission meeting at 6:30. We could do it at 5:30.
Well, we start 6 o'clock, usually.
We can do it at 5:00, like we did.
Let's do a 5:00 on the 15th, then. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
5:00. 5 o'clock. July 16th, 15th, sorry, 15th. 5:00 PM, Comcast workshop. And that'll be for all residents, citizens that have any issues, concerns with Comcast to come and speak, and I think Channel 95 will cover it, give us some, and then that'll give the information needed. We passed a motion, I think, last month about forwarding it to the ACTV board, so that this information they could take to the board when they meet in August to address it. Commissioner Scott?
No, you touched on it. Thank you, though.
Can I get a motion on that, just to make it official?
So, who can?
Got a motion, Commissioner Vowell, seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I will tell you this, I know I mentioned to you at Operations, we don't have our community liaison from Comcast appointed yet on the ACTV board. Brian Young with IT has been dealing with Comcast on switching over a lot of our lines, and he's got a great contact there. We'll go through him and see if he can't get us some representatives from Comcast. Do appreciate Brian for that offer, Brian.
Thank you. Any other new business announcements? Mayor Frank?
On the Operations Committee, forwarded with a recommendation for approval was a letter, I mean, was authorizing me to do that letter for the Centers for Medicare. Did you all vote on that?
No, it was just as an action item, so I thought we just got directions, there were more directions.
Okay. I wanted to get a vote, because I was wanting to have the supportive commission to include in that, in that public comment. This would benefit not only our own local hospital, but other rural hospitals across the state of Tennessee. It's a real change by Centers for Medicare, Medicaid, allowing for greater reimbursement costs.
Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey to do so, sir?
Yes.
We have a second by Commissioner Mead. Any further discussion or comments, questions for the mayor on that item?
I'd appreciate it if Commissioner Isabel could read that off.
Is the ambulance transportation sustainability one?
No, that was, that was the other one, that was just a, I was going to send a letter to the United States Senators and the Congressman that would help with reimbursement rates or costs for EMS. This was the letter that was to Seema Verma, who is the Administrator for Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services. It was Exhibit Number Two on Operations Agenda.
The motion was made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Jameson, and passed for the mayor to send proposed letter of support to the Center of Medicare and Medicaid Services, part of the open comment period regarding wage index provisions. I saw a move.
Yep, we got a motion, we got a second on that. Any other further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.